All right. Good evening. I'll call to order the a public hearing to consider the annexation request by William Andrew McHeldry. File number 2023-06. As described in the notice of hearing and application, the applicant's parcels are generally located south of May Street between 30th Street and Rocky Road. The affected parcels currently are zoned urban low-density residential, urban growth area UR1, and will remain urban low-density residential R1 following the annexation. This is a quasi judicial hearing and we are obligated to follow the land use decision-making processes in HRMC 17.09.040. The approval criteria applicable to the annexation are set forth in ORS 222.115 and 222.120 and HRMC 17.15.050. A quorum of the council is present. And I will now ask all commissioners to disclose any expartie contacts, conflicts of interest and bias in this matter. Well, let's just come on down the line.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
I also have none.
And Chair has none either. Would anyone in the audience like to question any commissioner on any disclosure, expartie contact, bias or conflicts of interest, or otherwise challenged participation of any member of the commission? Seeing none, we shall continue. For audience members watching on the video conference in Zoom, please use the raise hand feature in the webinar controls if you wish to speak. For audience members listening by phone, please use the following commands by via your phone's dial pad, star nine to raise a hand if you wish to speak, star six to toggle mute and unmute. Would any commissioner like to make a motion to disqualify any other commissioners from this, from hearing this application? Seeing none, I shall continue. So in tonight's hearing, we will use the following order, uh, order of presentation. First, we will begin with the applicant's testimony in which the applicant will describe the application before us and provide findings that address the approval criteria from the zoning code and comprehensive plan. Then we will hear from staff. And we'll hear from anyone in favor of the proposal and from opponents to the proposal. If there's opponent testimony, the applicant will then have an opportunity to present its rebuttal. The applicant has the last word because the applicant has the burden of proof of providing compliance with mandatory approval criteria. After we take testimony, we shall check to see if staff has any parting comments. And finally, after everyone interested in these matters has had a chance to testify, we will close the record, deliberate, and may render a recommendation tonight. Our recommendation, however, is not final until it's reduced to writing and officially issued. Our action on the annexation is only a recommendation to city council, which will hold its own public hearing. To appeal our decision, you need to participate orally or in writing before the close of the record, and you must raise your you must raise before us any issue you wish to preserve for such an appeal. Here are some basic rules for presenting testimony in tonight's hearing. First, please, uh, only present testimony in the order which I recited and do so only at the podium in the front table unless you are watching or listening by Zoom. Please begin with your mailing, uh, name and mailing address. And then limit your testimony to the substantive issues in the principal approved standards in ORS 222 and HR, HRMC 17.15. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to allow us or the parties to respond to the issue will preclude an appeal to city council or Luba based on that issue. Failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow us to respond to the issue will preclude an action for damages in circuit court. Finally, we may have, we may set time limits on the presentation tonight, although there's no limitation on written arguments which may be presented. So if there's any questions, please raise that during the testimony part of the meeting. May we hear from the applicant, please? Galway, go ahead. And we need to make sure that you're unmuted, so you have to hit the flying saucer. So it goes green. Some, yep.
Yep. I got it. Tap it there.
There we go.
Green means go. My name is William Andrew McElvery. I live at 657 Rocky Road. I've been residing there since nine, uh, almost 30 years. I'm here applying for annexation for something I'm required to do in order to move forward with my property being a habitable property. What I mean by that is my septic system, uh, I put in a building permit for another structure on the property. That brought up the fact that my septic system is 30 years old and probably going to fail soon. And due to me abiding city property and required to, um, to be annexed by the city, uh, and I cannot put in a new septic system. So I am here applying for annexation for something I'm required to do. So I'm a little bit confused by that, uh, but here I am and, um, uh, I hope you'll accept my application for annexation. I hope you'll use me as a case study to probably try to improve the process. Because it's been over four months that I've been making this effort to make this happen. Uh, and had my septic failed any time within those four months, I would have a house that's uninhabitable. And there seems to be no pathway to, to, um, expedite the situation. Uh, so too, I've got a building being constructed and basically I can't get a C of O on that building which the permit was given by the county until the city annexes it. So I'm caught in this crossroads. Um, so I'm hoping that I can be a case study moving forward and maybe some changes can be made to the code in such a fashion that can ease and ease the pathway to um, what the cities require me to do. Um, because a 30-page report to have is done and, and everything's, it's, um, it's been more stress than I want to deal with in my life right now. Anyways, that's all I got for you. Anybody have any questions for me? Okay. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. All right. Staff, may we have staff report? You for the comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As noticed, this application is for annexation to the city. This is a voluntary annexation, uh, by the applicant. Typically, the city is only allowed to annex property um, upon election of, or a vote of the electors, but for a circumstance known as the triple majority where a majority of the owners, majority of the value, majority of the geography has consented to annexation and request entry. Uh, in this instance, it is, uh, the applicant's property, uh, is two lots. Um, tax lot 3303 and 3304. The request has been made to annex the primary residence, um, which is on, uh, within it, we added a note and it's our recommendation to annex both properties owned because the second piece of property, uh, will eventually have the same circumstance. It is a lawful piece of property, lawfully created. It would not support a septic tank. Um, and under the city's annexation policies, which are outlined in 1715 and in the policy from 1982, the discussion of circumstances in which these are annexations are considered favorable. And that's a that's not just my term. That is a term that is dictated by, um, by the code. The city always prefers larger annexation pieces because, as mentioned, the administrative burden that comes with uh, having not one but two hearings. Um, this is the shortened version of the staff report, uh, of 38 pages, um, that precludes all the discussion before the county, recording of the state, development agreement, and the rigors that essentially we, we abide by. So, um, within the report, you have a recommendation for, uh, a staff recommendation to take both parcels owned by the property owner to ease that administrative burden the next time, to move closer to compliance with the 1715 regulations and the 1982 policy uh, that is still on the books today for the city's annexation. So, uh, there's some conditions of approval in there, um, that have been included. If you have any questions about what they are, what they mean. Um, again, your ask here is to make a recommendation to city council, who has the final say on the matter. Um, much like all annexations, um, they will conduct their own public hearing. And there will be a notice that has to be sent again and, um, we'll be there to comment, to carry your, your recommendation and provide a hearing for council. So notices is sent out to everyone within 250 feet. No comments were returned. Notices were sent to impacted taxing jurisdictions, um, no comments from, or comments were received from Farmers Irrigation, who had no comment. Ice Fountain Water with no comment. Uh, Hood River, uh, County Public Works with no comment. Uh, biggest impacted district is West Side Fire, which is required to be compensated for lost taxes over the next five years. They have not commented as well. So, um, it's a typical IGA in place. We are required to follow it. So nothing special, um, from them. So I'm here if you have any questions, uh, regarding your findings and or necessary um, details to move this along. But you have a recommendation approved subject to conditions included in the staff report.
And, uh, two questions. Was the applicant interested in having a second parcel annexed?
No, no, that was not his request. That is our recommendation. Well, I'm
I have enough land to put into the second field if that was allowed, but I cannot do that due to the city regulations of the abiding city property. So I have plenty of land to put into the second field, but I can't do that. And nor would I, you know, and nor would I want to be annexed over every single tax. But if that's the case, that's what's going to happen.
Do, it's also distance, not only the area, but the distance from the public service line is within 300 feet. Therefore, DEQ would not issue, DEQ through the county sanitarium would not issue a septic.
Yeah, I understand. So I guess my question is the pool house is going on the lot with the tax lot with the house? And the south tax lot is vacant? Solar array looks like? Nothing? Okay. Yep. So I guess I'll ask the question again. So is the, the city's recommending, recommending that you access both parcels? It looks like there's some requirement that as part of some permitting process, he's going to have to construct some improvements on 30th?
Correct. Either construct improvements or improve this agreement versus city.
Should I get to see what that is when you send the report, but I have not been sat down to say this, what it's going to cost me. I still need to know what the price tag is even though I'm ready to write the check.
Sure. Well, it, it looks like they're expecting you to do curb gutter and sidewalk extending along your property line on 30th.
That would have been a nice speed to have.
I mean, I, I'm not, I wonder if I'm interpreting this right, but I'm reading a condition.
So those, those are the conditions, um, if they get compliant, we're waiting for engineering to say what aspect of that would, would be required. So it hasn't been landed that all, all of them are required. So they, they wanted to know based upon the what they consider the actual basis.
Thanks.
So that's where do we, we're going to start that engine.
So then I guess the, the next question is if he's going to be required to construct some improvements and he's annexing both parcels. You know, is there going to be some creator burden? Because you, city is suggesting that he should annex both. He seems like the applicant wants at this point to index singly. Or he should have the choice because he's going to have to go through this process again if he ever have to annex the other one.
Missy?
Sure. Come on up to the podium so we can capture your
So based on what he just said, which is, you know, obviously very vague right now. I'm now hearing that we're putting the cart before the horse that I can annex and I'm going to have to pay all this money potentially putting in you know, curbs, gutters and sidewalks for one house of which I don't access it from 30th Street. So if that's the case, then I'm going to take this all off the table and figure it out some other way. Because I realizing this is like a slap in the face that engineering has no idea what it's going to cost me, what's required to do it. So I'm looking at my house being uninhabitable probably soon. And because I can't put a septic in. And now I'm going to have to pay tens of thousands of dollars for roads, curbs and gutters of which I have no no desire to build or develop my property. Zero. It's my home.
Yep. It's, I mean, it seems, seems like if putting myself in the applicant shoes, it would be good to know if I'm being if I'm going through the annexation process, what the public improvements requirements would be. And I guess the, the one, the other question that I was going to get to is I, I don't I, Duskin can probably comment whether there's some I, Duskin can probably comment whether there's some emergency provision. In the event of a failed septic system to avoid having to go through or some short shortened shortened. For habitability uh annexation process.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, we have allowed for uh waivers of remonstrance in cer- circumstances where there have been failures. Uh, to abate this, this is a circumstance where we've stated that, given the time it takes for annexation, that. With the right uh waivers of remonstrance, consent to annex and agreements that we would allow the construction to proceed. Pending or barring that the applicant fulfills its obligations to annex. So there's permits right now being evaluated by engineering and public works for connections and improvements. That are predating the annexation because the amount of time it takes to go through annexation. So, and those are based upon the condition and requirement that applicant fulfill its annexation requirement. So it's some. Flexibility to allow that condition. So, the and applicant has not been annexed, however, we acknowledge it takes a long time to annex and there needs to be. An opportunity to connect with good faith effort to complete the annexation agreement.
Well, I'm sure where I left it.
Yeah.
And it's also like, so I.
You, there's permit, we have permits, we've allowed permits to be submitted to engineering to connect to the sewer. Pending annexation, right now, right?
Okay.
So the end of the, yes. Go ahead, yeah. The only unknown I have is what, you know, this whole. Uh. Engineering requirement for my frontage and what I'm gonna have to put in. Which is, you know, I I didn't see that. I said I said conditions on the on the permit, but I never found them in your interview. I don't think those ever give me copy of these conditions to 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 review. And it doesn't have a price. I mean, that's, that's like, and five, you know, four months into this, I still.
Yeah, so we're a recommending body, right? Council's a deciding body.
Yep.
So, maybe there's some things that can get ironed out in this.
Yeah, we.
In between.
Is even as late of today, we've asked engineering to evaluate, but based upon the request. Uh, construction that occurred within the county and the amount, what what is the right amount of exaction here?
Dustin, what's the trigger for making roadway improvements to. Essentially the back property, right? Right? It's not even. Mr. McOwe uh is not asking to drive across that. What side of the plot, right? So essentially. It it, you know, if there's a cool house, i- is it of a size that is going to change the access? And even if it did, the access would be from the front of the house, not the back property line?
Some of this is, there's, there's a couple of things at work here. Um, some of this is born where all lots within the city. Within a certain amount of time need to have a lawful frontage. Uh, when these lots were created by the Gertie Division, um, the frontage was on thirtieth street. However, thirtieth wasn't the access point. They came through from the west and through a private easement. Um, at that time, there was no improvements uh to thirtieth. Thirtieth also wasn't really improved, but for a stone wall and farmhouse. So um, at this point, we're, we're doing a little bit of catch up um from. You know, what we refer to as a serial partition of Rocky Road from essentially Belmont to May Street. Um, thirtieth is a arterial street. It's being developed. It's going to provide access to Belmont, which will also be a a major street. Frontage improvements can be triggered not only at the time of land division, but in times of improvements. Uh, depending on whether it's a new dwelling, whether the amounts uh included are more than. When you have a significant remodel, all these can trigger frontage improvements, which don't always necessarily mean the street that you access from. Typically in the city it is, because typically a lawful lot has access onto. Public road or it's within P U D. Those items are constructed as a part of the overall subdivision. We're in a circumstance here where the only lawful frontage is onto the public road, which hasn't been improved. And so that's a bit of a circumstance created over time and over jurisdiction.
Is uh, so I have some experience with. Building in the city, existing structures and permits triggering frontage for. Improvements and typically it was something like if the permit is more than fifty percent of of the assessed value of the house. Then the frontage improvements could be triggered. And I thought there was some analysis that had gone back to. Go gone at least through Dan.
Yeah, uh, there's valuation triggers for sure.
And is there a mechanism to trigger these type of improvements? I know it, I know there is at the time of permitting. Is there at the time of uh annexation as well?
Yeah, annexation's contractual. So, you know, if there's deficiencies in public improvements, they can be resolved at that time.
Okay.
So, again, we are both recommenders to the city council. That's gonna be their final call on how to proceed with that. They will have a review and they will have an engineering recommendation based upon what is a. The engineer's assessment of a rational exaction based on this, based on a permit that was issued prior to it coming into the city. You know, based on the request that this is really a, you know, for the sake of application, a a need to connect a sewer. So. However, it not being completed fa- will fall on taxpayer. And so there's that balancing act of how much is applicant obligated to perform? And how much does the rest of the city have to share when it comes to complete that?
So in the event that the app, the burden falls on the applicant. And he's has a need to annex a single parcel. Um, would he have the opportunity to reject the annexation for the additional parcel? If there's additional frontage improvements required?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It's voluntary ask. If it was too much burden, there is no, there's no obligation to. However, it will create a circumstance where it is challenges with sanitation issue. So we didn't issue the permit. I'm unaware of the conditions of the permit being contingent on him hooking up.
It's not, sorry. Excuse me, my initial permit is not contingent on getting served. However, I have said that that my, the charge is saying is family, so.
Hey. City had some questions? Any other questions? Alright, with that then, I will. Bring Mr. Stephen McDary. It's then, do you have your final?
Well, Mr. Chair, uh, do we have, do we have anyone online? Okay, ju- John, just make sure for the record.
Um, okay, we're about to close the hearing. And we're gonna make a recommendation. Anything else you wanna add before we do that?
Really would like to know what the engineering wants to charge me for the potential improvements on thirtieth street. I can't believe I'm just turning around and picking that out right now. Maybe I'm just. Not good at this area, but it feels like a little blind side. Anyways, I hope you. For a recommended.
Thank you. Alright. Alright, with that then, we shall. Close the hearing. Um, anything to add? Sorry, before you do that, anything to add?
No, uh, if you have opinions and recommendations regarding the two issues raised uh in terms of second parcel and frontage improvements. Uh, again, those will go through, well, the frontage improvements will go through engineering, um. And both of them will be evaluated by council in terms of their uh consideration on annexation. So. Be helpful to take your recommendation to them as well.
Okay. Alright, with that then I'll close the hearing and let's start deliberation. Most can talk.
And I, uh, I had similar thoughts to what Bill has brought up here. Uh, about requiring such a big chunk of frontage improvements. For annexation for such a specific need, and I don't know. I I would be in favor of there being a way, cause I could to to not have that great of a financial burden. Uh, for people in this kind of situation, cause I can see that being something that happens to a lot of the, maybe not a lot, but. A a good handful of those undeveloped or currently developed plots in the county. By the urban growth boundary, but there are people who've lived there for a long time. Some of them probably, a number of them could not afford to do such a thing. And it seems like kind of a. An awful situation to be in where you have to choose to have an uninhabitable dwelling. Or pay an unknown number of thousands of dollars for frontage improvements. Like.
You wanna weigh in on two lots versus one?
Um, I think that if. I understand why the city is recommending both, but I think, given the burden. If they're requiring the frontage improvements, I would say that he should have a choice to to not do both.
Forgive my understanding, but I I think our recommendation is that the city allow annexation. And then he ultimately has the choice because it's, it's only a voluntary annexation. So it maybe. Staff can correct me if I've misinterpreted, but that um ultimately. It's like, the option is to do do both parcels at once, but only if the triple majority, which is one person. Um, in this case, or or one um land ownership, chooses to do that. Have I misunderstood?
Yeah, I think we we would wanna settle in on what are the level of improvements necessary prior to annexation? And have that memorialized with city council. So whether that's the parcel that's built on, uh, deferring the parcel that's not built on. Uh, certainly that could be time when, if that parcel was constructed, it could trigger the those improvements. I don't think we've settled in on. What, when and or or how much at this point?
I'd agree with what they're discussing. That it's a voluntary process and he gets to make the choice whether he wants one parcel or both parcels, but that should be clear to you. Then hopefully you understand that. And then certainly, depending on what you're gonna have to do, it's gonna influence your decision. Is whether or not you want to participate in either of those.
So I mean, I guess from my perspective, my recommendation would be both if the, if the requested both. Like, I think the, our thing is to accept the request, and so I would accept the extent of the request. Does that make sense? And is that one versus two parcels question?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
And I accept the request as well and I sympathize with the applicant. And there'll be same issues with many of my members about the unknown exactions that may come with any improvements to your property, so. Yeah, I'm also wondering if perhaps there's a chance since it was, you know, I haven't written this YouTube, if there's. You know, a way to get some clarity about what the amount would be in the interim between our recommendation. As this thought before it gets to city council, uh, and that might help in that situations it gets there.
Absolutely. Help us to pen this to a little more. But rather than push this hearing and wait for that, I think for the sake of time, we wanted to move this hearing. Knowing that we have another one coming, so.
Yes, that's, that's what I'm saying. So I don't think it makes sense. You know, started, yeah, maybe this over complicated at this point. There are one opportunities for uh, to make clarity, like, oh, no, this is, doesn't work for me. Also get some clarity between now and the next meeting, so that'd be in favor first, prevent.
And I also just clarify, I totally agree, um. It seems like there's two potential triggers for improvements. One is the actual annexation and then one is that. You're making some additional uh, you know, building structures. Um, and so I I'm wondering, I feel like that's a very difficult thing to, because obviously. You can talk and make an agreement when, in terms of annexation, what goes in the annexation agreement. But then uh, what the city would require versus what the county would require, I feel like is um. Going to be something that people are gonna have to face it with some unknowns. I just don't know a way around that. So i- is that an accurate assessment or is there a way around that?
You you should, right now, you should make a permit to put any habitable dwelling on the other lot, right? So, nor he he's, if he's ever gonna, if anyone's ever gonna build on that lot, it's gonna have to be within the city and the city requirements are pretty clear. In order to get a building permit on that lot, you're gonna have to do your frontage improvements, it seems like.
No, but I'm saying there's uh, the the plan is to build something now, not on the other lot, on the current lot.
Yeah.
Right? So, I mean, one thing is annexed, and then presumably after that, there's going to be a new permitting.
I think he's. The permit, the permit's already been issued through the county.
Oh, and and the city will honor that permit with no additions, no additional requirements. That's my question.
We we will rely on the annexation agreement, not a retroactive permit. So typically, if there's a permit condition that comes along with that, they refer it to us, we'll make comments. They often choose whether to use that or not. Uh. By rule, we should have the same exact ordinance. Meaning whatever the terms and the conditions of the county are, are the same as within the city. We have a, something called the UGMA, which is the Urban Growth Area Management Agreement. Um, however, the county regs have not been updated to keep pace with the city. So over time, we've seen that riff uh change between what the city would require and the county would require in the U G A. S- some of that is the reason why we now, um. You know, the regulations regarding if you're going to develop within the city and gain access to sewer, uh, you're gonna come in the city. Some of that has been. Made, the discrepancies in the regs made that more urgent.
Okay, thank you. No, I just wanted to clarify that you don't, it's not gonna like come back to bite later.
No, the 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 conditions for the permit should already be there.
Okay.
Already, now, that that's our, those are kind of salient, those are fixed, those are fixed with the, with the uh, with the building permit.
So is everything's in the one annexation agreement? It's not like you sign that and then, oh. By the way, we we're updating your permit and there's new new things on that.
Yeah, the, we, it's not our permit.
Thank you.
Let me ask a process question. So I know we're a recommending body, council's approving body, the applicant is voluntary. So uh, once it is the applicant, the annexation is approved by. The council, there's a period of time that it's valid and the applicant proceeds with the annexation? Or as soon as it hits council, he's automatically agree, I mean, is he signing the agreement?
No.
Prior to council hearing or?
No, no, um, council will have a public hearing.
Yep.
Uh, similar to this one where we d- discuss terms. At the end of that, based on the terms, they will, council will either recommend to. Uh, direct staff to, you know, upon approval, direct staff to draft an ordinance. And it's annexation agreement with the terms that've been discussed and agreed upon, uh, and then proceed with that. Then that ordinance has to be read two times. Um, if if advertised within seven days by title only, then it becomes an effective date. Then I get to send this notice to the county. I get to send it to the Department of Revenue at the state. They will accept the meets and bounds description or not, and the annexation agreement. So there, there's, all the way through Salem, you know, we, we will travel with this.
Sure. So I I guess my question is kind of trying to understand from the applicant's perspective is. At what point is he obligated to annex?
At what point is he obligated to annex?
Yes, uh, voluntary, but at some point.
No, this, this is a request that would go through now. The annexation is now. It's not a deferral of annexation. Um, this is the active request. So we're moving through the process of annexing this property.
And the applicant, at some point, can he withdraw his application?
Correct.
Up up until what point can he withdraw his application?
I believe prior to the second reading of the ordinance, an effective date.
Okay. Yeah, sounds good. Just trying to make sure everybody understands.
Yeah, so the public hearing um is not the matter. It is the. Yeah, so the public hearing um is not the matter, it is the second reading of the ordinance. And then, you know, that is, that's really the, the action that it takes to bring properties in. So.
Okay, any further question? Well, I uh, I sympathize here with Alexin as well, um, but I appreciate uh, moving this along so we can get it on the calendar with the city council and. We will have, well, clearer information by the time we get to that, so with that, uh, entertain a motion. Make this recommendation.
Make the motion that we approve file number twenty twenty-three dash zero six. Uh, or that we recommend city council approval of file number twenty twenty-three dash or six.
All right, so we have a motion on forward to approve file twenty-three dash zero six. You have further discussion? All right, how do you vote? Oh, I need a second.
Second.
All right, thank you. How do we vote?
I.
I. I.
I. I.
Your vote, I, motion passed, it's, all right, thank you, Mr. McElary.
So me, I got a note to council, I mean, obviously, the financial cost of this is important to the applicant, so it seems like. The sooner that we can get him that information, the better in the process.
You bet, I'm, I'm there as well.
Yeah, for from the, for the conditions.
Yeah.
Uh, and it seems like we did have some consensus limited, maybe we should take a vote within the council, but we. Just like commissioned, but we did discuss that, we thought that uh. That any requirement should be proportionate to the impact. The frontage improvement requirements, you agree with that statement?
Then they have to be, right?
Uh.
Or no, cause this is a voluntary agreement.
Annexation's contract, so if this property was in, we would be bound by the nexus and proportionality. Uh, standard, that is not the standard for annexation, but I think I heard you all in that, that easily can be wrapped. As you have objection, wrapped in the sentiment note from your recommendation to council that the frontage improvements be. Measured as some level of proportionate to the impact. So fair, fair representation of you all?
Yeah, yeah.
We got that.
Okay. I'll think with that, what you said now?
Yeah, so I'll draft it, um, make those notes in terms of planning commission's recommendation, prepare for the chair's signature.
Okay, with that, we'll close that portion of the hearing, thank you very much, thanks for what you're doing in Hood River, appreciate it. With that, we have a couple of meeting minutes to approve.
Also, Mr. Chair, I got something for you for July heads up, if we could, after we do our, our meeting minutes.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, we have two sets of the meeting, uh, draft meeting minutes from June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Uh, I don't remember that.
I.
And April seventeen, twenty twenty-three. Um, anyone find any issues, I didn't see anything, any. Issues, corrections to be made?
So, I read the minutes, I couldn't, I was like, I was trying to remember when that happened, if it was in recent times. But then I went through the date. Um, I'll make a motion that I recommend approval minutes for June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two and April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve these two sets of meetings, uh, meeting minutes. Um, any further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, for you, June, July?
July seventeenth, if you check your calendars for your uh, your availability. Uh, we plan to notice and bring before you a. Uh, it's not an action item, it's not a public hearing regarding the West Side or renewal area, so part of the adoption process of this. Includes uh, opportunity to be heard before planning commission, uh, we'll ask the public if they want to speak before planning commission. There's a series of hearings, so uh. Uh, Elaine Howard, our specialist uh, for urban renewal, uh, will be here and present some of the hearings along with. Be in a couple of other experts, so.
Uh, how many meetings are there with?
One.
Where the, and the other meetings are with?
Uh, there's meetings with the taxing bodies, so unlike a public hearing, the taxing bodies are really the, the meetings that uh. In the stakeholders in the urban renewal uh, plan. Uh, and they've, each of them have had a meeting and presentation by the, by the city manager, then it will go to city council. Uh, as well for a public hearing. So council will also be noticed, um, they've had a number of workshops on it already, but the next official public hearing on the plan is. Uh, will be after planning commission, so for you, it, uh, the date is set up on uh, July seventeenth, which is your regular meeting day. That's why we set on that one, so I. I'm hoping you, you have somewhat level of availability, either in person or remote.
I can make it.
Perfect.
I'm sorry, what did you say, this meeting was about, first part, I didn't hear it.
The establishment of a West Side Urban Renewals District.
Okay, got it. Uh, I am probably available, I'm.
You, you may also have another opportunity, um, you for, for your act.
Yes. Same presentation order.
Uh, probably a little different, just, but similar content, different audience.
What else, guys?
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Um, what about uh, in two weeks, June nineteenth? We on for meeting that week?
I don't believe we have anything scheduled on the nineteenth, we have something on the twenty-first. Uh, through the landmarks review board, uh, we will be hearing. Um, a request to redevelop the Wakoma Hotel as a seventy-room hotel. Um, it's really the landmarks aspect, the exterior, the buildings on National Register of Historic Places, therefore mods to the outside. Including signage, awnings, uh, need to be reviewed. So um, that's the purpose of that meeting, as well as two other. Um, really smaller functions, uh, confirmation of, we call it uh, significance or. Looking at the, at changes to approved architecture to the Columbia Gorge Hotel, which is a building you heard in the past. Uh, as well as sustain interiors, so there, those are smaller projects. Yeah. Well, you're welcome to join us. June.
Okay, so no meeting on the nineteen, and then the week of um, July third, fourth, is there a meeting that week?
Not, uh, I, but we technically could advertise one, but we don't anticipate to have one. So I, I go by these by math, mathematically, it is still possible. Uh, but I don't intend to schedule a meeting on the third of July, the day before the holiday, so. It would really come down to. It would be a matter of uh. Of, of extreme importance, litigation, emergency, so. So where I, where I needed to call you all in to make a, some sort of emergency vote or fix, so this is.
Right. Okay. All right, that's all, it is. Six fifteen, being adjourned.